Hello everyone, to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education, regular meeting for April, April 18th, 2016. Call the roll.
Mr. Habermut.
Here.
Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
Mrs. Oates.
Here.
Mr. Starr.
Here.
Mrs. Stowe. Here.
Okay, first item is to recognize some students today. So, we've got a group of students from Vermillion Elementary who have demonstrated that they're responsible citizens. So, anyone who's here for Citizen of the Month, please come up and form a line next to the podium. Okay, so as we go through the line, we're gonna answer a couple of questions, right? What's your name? What grade are you in? Who's your teacher? What do you want to be when you grow up? Alright? Alright, let's go. Step up. Right to the mic. What's your name, buddy?
Brayden.
What grade are you in, Brayden?
I'm in first grade.
And who's your teacher?
My teacher is Ms. Hudson.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
A ninja.
What's your name?
Olivia.
What grade are you in?
Second.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Becker.
What would you like to be when you grow up?
An artist.
An artist, nice. Step up there. What's your name, young lady?
Sophia Habermut.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Do.
What would you like to be when you grow up?
Soccer player.
What's your name?
Lily Marison.
What grade are you in?
First.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Hall.
And what would you like to be?
A schoolteacher.
Very nice. What's your name?
Rachel.
What grade are you in, Rachel?
First.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Schultz.
And what would you like to be?
A doctor.
Alright. What's your name?
Caitlin.
What grade are you in, Caitlin?
Second.
Who's your teacher?
The Spanish.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
New keeper.
Nice. Turn it.
Alyssa.
What grade are you in?
I'm kindergarten.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. La.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
Officer.
Alright. Everybody.
Zack.
What grade are you in?
fourth.
What's your teacher?
The Spanish media.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
Basketball player.
Basketball. What's your name?
Kyler.
Kyler, what grade are you in?
First.
First. What do you want to be when you grow up? I skipped one link. Who's your teacher?
Ms. Frank.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Wrestler.
Alright. What's your name?
Claire.
Claire, what grade are you in?
Third.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Parker.
And what would you like to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
Teacher, very good. Alright, so if everybody, I'm sorry, if everybody could come back up, if you guys can lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance. I ask everybody to stand, we'll do the Fledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Ready? Go ahead. Start.
Hi, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a free, public, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five on the agenda, Student Liaison Update. Sarah?
Okay, we have, today we have three different groups coming to speak to us today. We have Mr. Snook, he's an advisor for Speech and Debate, and he's bringing our two national qualifiers to speak to us and tell us kind of how they got to where they're at. Mrs. Brini has some students who are from her eighth grade to talk about Believing Ohio projects and presentations that they have done. And then we have Mrs. Gentile and Mrs. DeWitt to talk about the National History Day projects that they have been doing. Who wants to go first?
You do it, Snook. Don't ever listen to business, Snook. Alright, I'm gonna go first because I had three young ladies that were gonna come with me today and then a song blocking got cancelled, I mean got removed or whatever. So, I brought some of their projects that you can take some time to look at them, I will come down in the morning and take them back down. But, we did for the first time in eighth grade, a project called Believing Ohio, and it is a STEM project that's put on by the Ohio Department of Education. And what they had to do was they had to come up with a STEM concept and a new product, or to modify a product, that would solve a problem for them. And so, we did this with our honors kids, we had forty-five children do it, and they did such a great job, I was so proud of them. They had to type and do research for a seven to twelve page paper, which was extremely difficult for them because they're in eighth grade. And they powered through all year and just kept doing it and doing it. And out of forty-five students, we had eighteen of them who were in the superior category. We had one gal, Liberty Oliver, who scored thirty-nine point five out of forty, she did an outstanding job. And so, in our top ten, we were awarded, excuse me, a grant from the state of Ohio for doing it of four hundred dollars. And that four hundred dollars was given to the students as prizes. So, the top ten students got cash prizes, and the four best boards got cash prizes. So, we were able to give out four hundred dollars worth of prizes to them, hopefully that they'll take and get, you know, savings bonds so they can go to college. When you do this at the high school level, they actually do give out scholarships. Students can earn up from two thousand to twenty thousand dollars in scholarships for schools in the state of Ohio. So, it really is a great program. So, we wanted to kind of pilot with the eighth graders and see how they did at the middle school level, so that when they do it in the high school level, that they've already had it. So, I was very proud of them, I wish they could have been here, but hopefully they're winning their game on the range. Thank you.
Right here. Go ahead, you're ready to go.
I'm Leah Gentile, and that is Angela DeWitt. We're here to talk about the National History Day project. This is actually our fifth year doing this project. We've been pretty successful, we're taking twenty-five kids to Columbus for the state competition on April thirtieth. And we brought with us today Jayden Nestor-Fax and Mason Boyce, and they're gonna show you their projects. Students can select to create projects from five categories. They can write a paper, they can create a documentary, they can build an exhibit board, or they can construct a website. So, we have a documentary and an exhibit board for you today. We have students competing in four of the five categories, I'm sorry, the fifth one was a paper. Four of the five categories we're competing in at state on the thirtieth. I won't steal your Isaac's blunder anymore. Alright, Jayden, why don't you start?
Okay, well, I'm gonna tell you about my National History Day board and the process I went through when I was doing it and researching. Last year, I tried to do National History Day in a group project, as an exhibit board, but as I'm sitting there working hard and trying to get my work done, all my group members are like messing around and talking and playing games. So, this year, I decided to work alone, because I didn't want to have to deal with all the problems of working. So, I went home and I told my mom and my dad about this project, and I told them about the theme, I told them that I competed athletic, what? I'm getting it. I told them what the theme was and I told them that I wanted to compete in this project. And so, the theme for this year's NHG project is Exploration and Encounter and Exchange in History. And I chose Gandhi as my topic, because he has always been my hero. It just amazes me how one man can develop one thought and build off of it and lead a country to gaining its independence, just because of one thought of non-violence. I chose to fit all three themes this year, because I could have chose only one, I could have chose only two, but I chose all three because he had fit all three of them. One of the first themes is exploration, and he fit this theme, because he had the idea of this thought, that he preferred to use the Sanskrit word of satyagraha, but it really meant civil disobedience. And it meant pretty much just protesting in a nonviolent way. So, when he moved to South Africa, he traveled to South Africa to become a lawyer in eighteen ninety-four, and when he arrived there, he was only about twenty-four years old. And the problem of Indian discrimination was very common in South Africa at the time that he arrived. So, when he arrived there, he started to figure out that he didn't have to like use violence, he could just say words to make his point, and using nonviolent way. So, one of the key points when he was in South Africa is when he was traveling there, he was thrown off a train, because he refused to move back from a first class seat to a third class seat, just because of his skin color, even though he had a valid first class ticket. Another key point is when he arrived there, a law was passed that all Indians had to be fingerprinted and recorded by the police, that they had entered the country of South America. And Gandhi, along with many other Indians, refused to obey the law, so he got thrown in prison. That is when he discovered the idea of civil disobedience, or satyagraha. Another key point is when, in nineteen thirteen, he started a satyagraha movement called the Great March, and it consisted of two thousand and thirty-seven men, women, and children, and that was in protest of the Indian discrimination in South Africa. So, when he returned to India in nineteen fourteen, this is when he was encountering the British, who were pretty much just ruling India, creating laws to make Indians feel lower than them and have more and more power. He was encountering the British and using satyagraha to his advantage on a political level against the British. One of the key points, and here is when, in nineteen nineteen, a new act was passed that pretty much the British were trying to just gain more and more power over the Indians. And Gandhi didn't want to do this law. He got thrown in jail for doing this, and there was a prayer meeting held in the middle of India in New Delhi, and the British army had opened fire at them, with, they had like a lot of rounds of guns and rifles, and over two thousand, over thousands and thousands of Indians were killed. Gandhi wasn't expecting, he had to, he wasn't expecting that, just because he was, he was making all these movements and having all these meetings and stuff, that he would just have to suffer, all the Indians would have to suffer. So, he had to disband the idea of it for a couple of years, until the British started taxing the salt, that Indians needed to live. The salt was a vital nutrient that the Indians needed to survive. And so, Gandhi, along with many other leaders, had organized a march called the Salt March, or satyagraha, to march two hundred and forty miles to the sea in Dandi, India. And when he arrived there, fifty thousand people were waiting there to have him pick up salt. And right, he picked it up and reached up one grain of salt, and that is when the turning point happened. He started winning the battle against the British. And then, when the Gandhi-Irland Pact was signed in nineteen thirty-one, it was a pact that let, if the British released the salt taxes, that the Indians had to stop the protests against the Indians. And so, after that, in nineteen forty-eight, Natharam Gath, who was a Indian in South Africa, had traveled to India and had assassinated Gandhi when he was at a place that he had established in nineteen fourteen. So, after Gandhi's death, his thought of satyagraha had influenced many other great leaders of the world, such as Martin Luther King Junior and Nelson Mandela. And he had also influenced a doctor that I met over an interview, and she actually practices his ideas and his preaches in Toledo. And I had gotten an interview with her, and she had a lot of quotes, and she won the Martin Luther, Ohio Martin Luther King Award, just for practicing satyagraha and opening all these programs to make sure kids got off the streets and learned about this great peaceful movement. And so, I added myself to the timeline, because the exchange of my presentation was who he had influenced, and other people were exchanging the thought of his nonviolent idea of satyagraha. And as I am speaking to you, and I did at my Vermillion School presentation in my regional competition, and I'm gonna do it at state on April thirtieth, I am exchanging his idea with you.
Uh, hi, my name's Mason Boyce. For my project, I choose Apollo eleven, with my partner Andrew Massey. And one of the main things that interests us about this project was a lot of the science behind the project. Learning about how they built the rockets and how they really got to the moon was probably the biggest thing that really interested us about our project.
On July twentieth nineteen sixty-nine, the Apollo eleven mission blasted off into orbit on its way to the moon. Neil Armstrong and Buzz Aldrin landed safely in Explanaria on the moon known as the Tranquility Base. After the Apollo eleven mission, NASA encountered new technologies and advances in space engineering. Apollo eleven exchanged new ideas with scientists about space travel and landing objects on other celestial bodies. Apollo eleven inspired new space technologies, which in the future will take us further into the universe.
That's one small step for man, one giant leap for mankind.
The reason why Apollo eleven existed was because of the Cold War. This invisible war, you might say, was the battle between the Soviet Union and the United States, to influence the nations of the world towards Communist Russia or Democratic America. In the Soviet Union and America's eyes, the only way to influence the nations of the world was to make them see which country had the most advances in technology. This battle was called the Space Race. The ultimate goal was which country could get to the moon first. Before NASA's Apollo eleven mission, there were the Gemini and Mercury missions. The mission that practically ended the Space Race was Apollo eleven. Astronauts Neil Armstrong, Buzz Aldrin, and Michael Collins were specifically selected for this mission. These three men changed the outcome of the Space Race in the Cold War as we know it by going to the moon and safely returning back to Earth. Apollo eleven mission commander Neil Alden Armstrong was born on August fifth nineteen thirty in Wapakoneta, Ohio. He earned his bachelor's degree in aerospace engineering at Purdue University in Indiana, and flew Navy combat missions during the Korean War. Armstrong was also a part of the Gemini eight space mission, and successfully pulled off the first docking between two spacecrafts. Lunar module pilot Edwin Eugene Aldrin Junior, otherwise known as Buzz, was born on January twentieth nineteen thirty in Montclair, New Jersey. He earned his bachelor's degree at the US Military Academy in nineteen fifty-one. He flew sixty-six combat missions during the Korean War. Aldrin was a part of the Gemini twelve missions, and helped plan Apollo eight and nine missions. The third member of the team, Commander Module Pilot Michael Collins, was born in Rome, Italy on October thirty-first nineteen thirty. He earned his bachelor's degree in science in nineteen fifty-two at the US Military Academy at West Point, New York, and was a part of the Gemini ten missions. Little did these three men know that their background would lead them to be a part of one of the most iconic historical events in history, Apollo eleven.
All three of them had, you know, a slightly different path. So, Neil Armstrong was in the Navy, he was a naval aviator, but then he went into civilian life, and then eventually he applied to work for NASA, first as a test pilot, and then eventually as an astronaut. So, he came in NASA's second astronaut crew. Buzz Aldrin, I believe, came in in the third series of astronauts. There's, they have their own classes, just kind of like a graduating school. So, they each come in different sections together. So, Neil was the first of those three to come into NASA as an astronaut. You know, Mike Collins, he was an Air Force brat, so he kind of grew up with the Air Force his entire life before he became an astronaut. So, they all had their own different paths, but they all had essentially the same training, they were all pilots. They all had, you know, extensive resumes in terms of what they had flown, number of hours from. So, they were very good at their jobs. But then there's all the testing, all the other requirements that NASA went through. So, not only were they the best at what they did, they also had all these other attributes that NASA thought would be important, as they expanded the Gemini program.
On the morning of July sixteenth nineteen sixty-nine at nine thirty-two AM, Neil Armstrong, Buzz Aldrin, and Michael Collins lifted off from Cape Canaveral Space Center and headed towards the closest celestial body to us, the moon. The launch of the Saturn V rocket was broken up into three stages. The first stage, which was the biggest, burned up all of its fuel in the bottom fuel compartment. After that, the compartment separated from the rest of the rocket. The second stage burned up all of the fuel in the next bottom compartment moments later, and then separated. This boost lasted about six minutes, which propelled the rocket to a height of about one hundred twenty miles above Earth's surface. By now, the Saturn V rocket was traveling at a speed of about fifteen thousand miles per hour. The third stage burned the fuel in the next bottom compartment for about two minutes. Then, the engine shut down on schedule. After a couple of hours in Earth's orbit, the third stage engine boosted the Saturn V rocket out of Earth's orbit towards the direction of the moon. After the boost, the Apollo eleven space capsule had released from the rocket, and then moments later began to dock with the lunar module. After this, the two capsules began their voyage towards the moon. Four days later, on July twentieth nineteen sixty-nine, Armstrong and Aldrin went into the lunar module and deported from the command module. Collins had to stay in the command module and maneuver it while the two men were on the lunar surface exploring what it had to offer. While descending towards the moon, Armstrong noticed that the original landing site was too dangerous to land on, and decided to maneuver the lunar module to a flat area known as Tranquility Base. Six hours after landing, Armstrong departs from the lunar module, and with his left foot on the moon, he says, "That's one small step for man, one giant leap for mankind." Armstrong and Aldrin set up experiments on the lunar surface, collect materials, and explore the vast area of the moon. Twenty-three hours after the landing, the lunar module lifts off from the lunar surface and rejoins the command module.
That looks beautiful, honey. It has a star beauty all its own, it's like much of the high desert of the United States, it's different, but it's very pretty out here.
Moments after the descent journey back to Earth, the lunar module is let free and crash lands into the moon. Three days later, on July twentieth nineteen sixty-nine, after escaping lunar orbit, Neil Armstrong, Buzz Aldrin, and Michael Collins safely splashed down into the Pacific Ocean and were greeted by the USS Hornet. This eight-day mission solidified their place in history. The Apollo eleven mission had many impacts on modern-day aerospace and engineering as we know it today. Apollo eleven helped revolutionize new technologies for our modern-day space exploration in the forms of landing gear for modules and rovers to land on other celestial bodies. Apollo eleven's landing gear helped aerospace engineers and physicists land more men on the moon. Also, the landing gear helped rovers land on Mars, a comet, and other planets in our solar system. Apollo eleven was a major factor in the end of the Space Race and Cold War. With the second Neil Armstrong set foot on the moon, the United States won the Space Race. That meant that they had the most advances in technology, which meant that they had won the Space Race. Ever since man came to be, his dream was to reach for the stars. On July twentieth nineteen sixty-nine, we achieved our dreams by sending a man to the moon and safely returning him back to Earth, just like former President John F. Kennedy promised the United States.
We choose to go to the moon. We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do the other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard.
As a nation, the American people completed something truly remarkable that will forever be a part of our history.
Both excellent programs, thank you.
Well, I hate following them up, because I hope I sound half as good as they do. Actually, I'm really excited to see two future Speech and Debate members. Trust me, I start scouting at like first grade. First word, it's not like, "Hi," we're in business. I'm here to talk about Speech and Debate Team. We are currently at forty student members, which is really exciting. I'm gonna get to the national stuff with them, but I just would like to hype my own team, because I'm really ecstatic about what they've done. This team has earned more degrees than any other team has earned in the past ten years, so it's really impressive to see so many dedicated students involved, and to have forty kids is like exciting for me. We got to take eight students to state, which is really exciting, we got to take my other this group who's actually here, Kyle Preett, Jamie Gayhart, Kylie Nguyen, who is actually one spot away from basically becoming a semifinalist, and this is gonna sound really like similar here soon. Those were the four that didn't break, so half the team of the four, four of the eight that we took did break at state, so it's really exciting that we had so many people do so well. Nikki Peter, who's actually in attendance, was a semifinalist at state in her first year competing at the state tournament, which is awesome. Eileen Costello was thirteenth and a quarterfinalist, and she was one spot away from making it to be a semifinalist. Kristy Fennick, who's also here with us, was also placed thirteenth in her event, which was one spot away from being a finalist. And then Megan Grantham was our highest placer, seventh overall in a brand-new event, and she was also one spot away from being in the finals. So, we were always just that one spot away, which in the moment is frustrating, but when you look back at it, it's pretty awesome that we had so many people there. I'm gonna cede the floor to these two wonderful ladies, because I really, I can't say anything nice enough about them. But both of them will be attending the national tournament. This is the first time in my memory that we've taken two separate people to national tournament, so it's exciting and nerve-wracking, because we have to get to like seventeen different locations to compete. And Salt Lake City is not like a really small city, so. But from June twelfth to June seventeenth, they're gonna be representing Vermillion High School, Vermillion local schools, and I really couldn't think of two better individuals to represent us. I'll let them explain more about them, because they'll say it much better, thank you.
Alright, so I'm Eileen Costello, I'm super excited to be a national qualifier this year. At the beginning of the school year in Speech and Debate class, Mr. Snook had us write down a goal, and my goal wasn't even to make it to nationals, it was actually to make it to the final round at state, but as he said, that didn't happen, it's okay. But I competed in Original Oratory this year, which is a ten-minute speech that you write yourself, and my topic was Political Ignorance and the dangers that it poses on a society. And so, throughout the regular season, I was placing pretty well. I qualified to state early through the bid system, so that was pretty exciting. And I didn't really think I had like that big of a shot at nationals going into the national qualifying tournament, but the tournament is three, two days long, not three. And after the first And after the first day, I was doing pretty well and I got to come back, so that was exciting. But I still didn't have my hopes set too high. And then I kept doing well throughout that whole tournament, and so suddenly like something in me changed, and I was like, wow, I really want to go to nationals. And so then it became like one of the most nerve-wracking, crazy days of my life, but Snook was there to help and support me. And at the end of the day, I qualified to nationals. It was super exciting. And I cried, and it was a good time.[630.41][630.41](Laughter). I'll say it, I have no shame.[634.54][634.54](Laughter). But then, in terms of preparation for nationals now, we, I'm actually competing in an online tournament right now, which is kind of weird, but I just send in a video of my speech and then people from all over the nation are sending me back ballots and raking me in rounds. So that's pretty helpful, because if we only get feedback from people in our district, it's kind of hard to gauge how you're going to do at the national tournament, because there's so many different speaking styles and things that people like. And so this feedback has been really helpful. One of the judges called me dude. That was pretty cool.[673.16][673.16](Laughter). It was exciting to me.[676.12][676.12](Laughter). And I'm doing okay, actually, in that tournament so far. We're waiting for the final ballot back for the preliminary rounds, so then we'll see how it goes from there. And then at nationals, there are these things called supplemental events. So that's like if you don't break in your original event, so if I don't break in original oratory, then I'll compete in expository speaking, which is, was actually an event last year, and Rebecca Terschak, I don't know if you remember her, she competed in that event last year and did very well. And so that's a five-minute speech, basically kind of just an informative speech, just speaking about something and explaining it to an audience. So I am currently writing that speech. Mr. Snook was nice enough to make it an assignment in our speech and debate class, so that I have time to write that kind of built into my school schedule. And that speech is actually going to be about Irish dancing, which is interesting, because there's a board over there from one of the eighth-grade students about Irish dancing shoes. So check it out, it's fun.[741.32][741.32](Laughter). So I will be writing that speech. And then also, in terms of my original oratory again, we're looking at different judges and coaches from our district, the Cleveland district, who are willing to donate some of their time to practice with me and help me out to prepare for the national tournament. So then hopefully we'll be geared up, ready to compete, fly out to Salt Lake City, and I'm super excited to spend a week with these lovely Snook and Kristy.[771.01][771.01](Laughter). But yeah, and I'd also like to thank the Board of Education for all of your support in helping us go to nationals, because without the support of the community, we really wouldn't exist as a team. So it's really awesome to get that support from all of you. Thank you.[789.04][789.04](Applause).
Hi, my name is Kristy Fenwick, and as you already heard, I compete in congressional debates, which is basically what it sounds like. It's a mafia congress with about 20 other kids in the room, and you're debating by yourself, so it's a singular event, you don't have teams or anything. And there's rotating topics, there's about 12 topics every week, which comes along with a lot of prep compared to the other events, because you need to prep 12 different things every single week. It's most of the time you want to have something on like the pro side and the con side for both of them, so that way you're that much prepped. Going forth like at the national tournament, there's going to be a lot more legislation, which is like a lot more topics than the other events. And thankfully, throughout the year, I've had a lot of help from the class that we have right now at the school. Last year, I could barely prep like three topics every week. And this year, I've prepped almost every single topic every week that I've gone to speech and debate. Because of the class, I've had more of like a time-set schedule to prep these different topics, and it's helped me out a lot in the class. Eileen was talking about her goal that she set in the beginning of the year. My goal was to break at the first break at states. So I really exceeded that goal, and I was not expecting at all walking into the national qualifying tournament to be able to come out and actually qualify to nationals. So I would just like to thank the school and Mr. Snook and Ms. Z for teaching that class and really helping me out with that, because I don't think that there's any way that I would be able to go to nationals without having that class in place. And prepping for the national tournament, there's, I've already gotten help from people from different schools and people that have gone in my vet to nationals in the past, and everybody in the class is helping me prep for it, because there is going to be a lot involved. But I would just like to thank the Board as well for helping me out and supporting us as a team, like Eileen said, because we wouldn't be able to have the team as it is right now with 40 members, which is magnificent, so, yeah.[922.01][922.01](Applause).
Do you have any questions?
No questions, but good luck.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's really awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Virgil.
Thank you.[931.32][931.32](Laughter).
Okay. You know, every month we bring groups of students in or staff members or whatever, and every month they're kind of blown away by just how many more and more and more great things are going on in the school. So if you're not extremely impressed and extremely proud of what our students and staff are doing, take a closer look. I'm very impressed. All right, moving on. Item six is the legislative update. Mike?
There's no, I checked OSBA, there's no upcoming alerts or any new legislation on the boards right now, so.
Item seven is public participation. Anyone is welcome to step up to the podium and speak if they like. If you do, introduce yourselves, tell us who you are, and feel free to speak.
Okay. Hello, good evening. I'm Jenna Smith.
And I'm Nikki Peter.
And we are both sophomores here at Vermillion, obviously. Oh. We'd like to address our concerns about our education and the issue of many of next year's classes being cut.
We have a little something prepared for you, so we'll both speak on this issue. Sorry, I'm going to get the microphone. My fellow students and I fear that our high school education and careers will become degraded if the Board continues with this decision. By cutting classes with less than 20 students, the amount of options and ranges for students with different areas of skill and talent becomes very limited. At Vermillion, we claim to support academics, support more opportunities for students, and stress the importance of becoming college and career-ready. What my peers and I don't understand is how taking away classes can achieve better futures for Vermillion High School students, or how this benefits students or teachers. By cutting classes, the advisors have less classes to teach and are not able to spread their knowledge to students who are eager to learn and truly enjoy learning in that classroom specifically. This year alone, we have had numerous classes with less than 20 students. We don't understand how cutting all of these classes can improve the learning of students at Vermillion High School. The students, and I'm almost positive the teachers as well, have not received an explanation as to why this is happening. As honors students, we feel that our district is not doing enough to help advance our future and that we have less support in driving to push us to success. Not only honors classes, but subject areas such as art, music, math, English, foreign language, technology, and science classes will all have classes cut if the Board continues with this decision. Vermillion's reputation for having an outstanding academic program will fade away if these classes are cut.
All right. So standing in front of you today is a group of students with very different lives and different purposes for being here in life. Throughout the high school, some students are extremely involved. Some take all honors, some play multiple sports, some excel in visual and performing arts, some students really enjoy their science or math class, and some have a passion for Spanish or French. There is nothing wrong or right about any of these students, but they all have different interests and needs for their high school career. What we, as the body and future of Vermillion High School, are stressing to you today is that the policies that are being enforced next year are only affecting one small section of students. They are striking the talents and futures of bright young adults from every part of the school, and therefore the entire populace of Vermillion High School. Twelve you sitting here today, please put yourselves in our shoes. Imagine what you, imagine that you have kids our age who have talents in different areas, whether it be foreign language, music, art, anything. Imagine that this class or subject area was the sole thing that your child excelled in, and was something that inspired them to no end, and was a part of their lives that they loved and wouldn't give up for the world. Now imagine that being taken away. You think to yourself, how can I help my child? How can I prevent a class that they love so much from being taken away from their high school careers forever? There's nothing you can do, and nothing that they will ever be able to if we don't change the policy now. Imagine being even a staff member, being forced to stop teaching the class that he or she specialized in and dedicated more than 10 years of their life to, because they were short two students for that specific class. What you have just experienced is what most of the students and teachers at Vermillion are thinking right now. It is very clear that our numbers are decreasing every time a grade enters the high school. Cutting classes won't increase the enrollment. Cutting classes won't draw people to Vermillion or make students eager to come to school. On the contrary, cutting classes will cause teachers to leave and to find schools with better resources and job opportunities. It will lead to an even further decline in enrollment as students leave Vermillion, because the options they are searching for suddenly disappear right before their eyes. Imagine being a student at Vermillion High School, a place where great opportunities should be provided for you, where suddenly everything was taken away. Would you stay? Thank you.
Yes, if you want.
Okay. I've met with the Board and we've looked at our financial forecast, which was presented to the community and to the Board. And at this point, I'm not quite sure where the students are getting their information about any classes that are being cut. The only one that you might have knowledge of would be the sign language class. And there's been no announcements about any classes at this point that are being cut besides that, to my knowledge. Mr. Bellada, you're the curriculum director and the assistant superintendent. To your knowledge, has there been any announcements that have been made about any class except sign language?
I'd like to meet with, you know, ladies to see what classes are we speaking on.
Yeah. Is there anything, I mean, just off the top of your head, anything in particular?
Well, for us, I know that, not me personally, but a lot of my friends, you know, they've signed up for classes in their schedules, but they've been denied the right to enter those classes because either not enough students were, signed up for it and stuff like that. So it's not that we were like getting our information from somebody, that they're, you know, pulled out of class and told they physically weren't able to be in that environment.
All right. Well, I think the best thing would be to meet with Mr. Bellada, so that we can look at what those classes are that you were told that you couldn't sign up for. The only one that we know we have a problem with or have had a problem with was the sign language class, because that job needs to be posted and we haven't found a person to fill it. So we were looking for a teacher that could fill that role that we weren't able to find. And then that has to be a decision as to what to do going forward to continue to offer a class that we can't find a teacher for.
Yeah, we were just concerned about the 20-student limit that we were informed of, because a lot of our AP classes and a lot of our electives would have to be cut if it was that number.
Yeah, well, I don't, we're looking closely always at the AP classes and what's necessary for your graduation and what's necessary within programming. And before we make any decisions that would negatively impact the district, that has to be discussed with the Board. Yeah, and we're not aware of any cuts right now, so. Yeah, we haven't got that far yet that we're looking at that as an option. I have brought a budget before the Board that looks at different, different options as to cost-cutting savings, but one of the things that we've always attempted to do to our very best is to keep it as far away from the students as we can and not let it affect program. So we're looking, we've brought those types of things before the Board, and the Board knows that that so far has not affected, you know, major, even in a minor way, any programming except sign language. That has been one that we've had to discuss, because just the availability of a teacher. But, and that's not to say, though, that we won't still have to look at those as possible options, but before we do that, it'll be discussed with the Board, it will be discussed with the community, but we're not there. We're not that far yet. I could just tell you, at this point, whatever it is that you're concerned about, please talk to Mr. Bellada. I'll be part of those conversations as well. And I'm not quite sure what has been said or what hasn't been said, but we'll figure it out and we'll make sure that we're discussing it with you and we'll talk about it in the community as well. It won't be a secret, whatever it is that we're doing, because we want to be as transparent, we want to be transparent with this situation if it does affect us. But yes, we do have some red numbers in our budget, but we're looking, as I said, to keep it away from the students as much as we possibly can. And that's what we're successful so far in doing, and I'm not anticipating any huge changes in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we certainly don't want anyone to suffer as a result, you know, so we want to make sure that everybody is, has an opportunity to take what they would like to take, so. And thank you guys for stepping up and speaking.
Your presentation was very nice.
All right, good.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Okay. Item eight on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to talk about the tentative agreement that we reached with the Vermillion Teachers Association. It's a three-year teacher contract that we were able to strike with the Teachers Association. We met with the team, myself, Mr. Bellada, Mrs. Riddle, and Mrs. Wilson for the administrative side, and on the teacher's side was a team of teachers with Mrs. Justin. The Vermillion Teachers Association president was there at the table, and so we were able to come up with this three-year agreement that we believe is in the best interest of the district, that we recommended to the Board. We discussed the details of the agreement in executive session at the last Board meeting, and we've recommended this to the Board to be passed. We were able to do it without attorneys being present at the table with us. We think that it's a fair agreement, just like with any agreement, there's compromise that has to be made. And I would think that all sides would have to agree that we worked real hard at it. Anytime that you negotiate, it's not an easy process, because it's, it's a document, it's a legal document, that we had to go over page by page and make sure that the legal language that was within it is meeting the needs of all sides. And so their team did a good job as well, so we were happy to, to get that done. Mr. Cole was present at the table with Mrs. Justin, and then they had two alternates that sat at the table as well. So we're bringing this agreement before you, recommending that it be passed by the Board. You've been able to look at the details, and hopefully you're comfortable to make the final passage today.
Item two.
We recommend a resolution to approve the tentative agreement with the Vermillion Teachers Association effective August 1st, 2016 through July 31st, 2019.
I'll second. Discussion. Just want to congratulate the Vermillion Teachers Association and the district for getting this done quickly and, and like you said, without the extra cost of attorneys, so, great job. Call the roll.
Mrs. Simmons? Yes. Mr. Hayton?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stott?
Yes.
Treasurer's report.
I should have a packet, I put it in the place this evening. So the first page is the main reconciliation as of the end of March, and the total fund balance of all funds, $20,006,23,6174. Next page, this is a detailed financial report, and I want to just go over some of it, because it is quite lengthy tonight. So when I talk about the five-year forecast, that is the general fund and the 016 emergency levy fund. This page, excluding the last two lines, that is the general fund. So there are things that I've put in special cost centers and put them aside, set them aside, so that it doesn't get mixed into the main operating account, which is the first item. The second one, the 001, 9531, that's the drama and performing arts fund that we set up for selling the plates for the auditorium seats. Yes, thank you. The next line item is our e-bray funding, and that is where we get some reimbursement for internet connectivity from the federal government. So that is something that we set up- So that is something that we set aside in a separate area. The next line item is that hundred and eighty-one thousand for the science wing. So I told you I put it, I set it aside within the general fund, but it's identified here. So we will use all of that for the science wing. There's about forty-five thousand left in the building project fund, and I've talked to the attorney and to Terry and we're good to use that, so I didn't cover that. So that just leaves, I think it's twenty, thirty thousand to come out of our PI fund. And we talked about wanting to really preserve that, so I wanted to let you know how we uncovered that. The, um, the next one is something that got created when they brought things back to K-12. So this is an example of having to research and, this probably fit into one of the other categories, that when they brought it back, they set it in a separate cost center. And then the next one, the '01, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, that's that payable control account that we talked about on the bank reconciliation when we were in K-12 because we were on a crow account. So this account has to be cleared out by June 30th, for lack of a better. The next two items, again, these got brought back from K-12, they need to be reclassified. We tried to set up a fund to just track coffee shop expenses. So that's one of those that I'm working with Denise now to make sure we have everything coded correctly. The next page goes on to several other funds, but the main thing, I wanted to talk to you, the third one, the emergency levy fund. So that's where all the proceeds go when we pass the emergency levy. The next line item then is that budget reserve. If you remember, we set that money aside, which should be about one point eight five million, and I've upped it a little bit to a little over two million because of the percentage of the budget that that should be quite to. So then we've got several other funds attached, we've got student activities, athletic funds, state and local funds. So then when you get to the last page, you see that twenty million, six twenty, three sixty-one, that's what we balance the bank to. There's lots of information here, and the new board members, if you want, I can take some time to review and get some days for a work session. We did that before when I first started, and that was one of the things I was going to recommend, that we have a work session toward the end of May to approve the forecast so we have some more time to work on the budget adjustments that we need to do before the forecast.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was thinking maybe like the twenty-third of May, if that's good for everyone, Monday. The next Monday is the holiday. And so I'll have a lot more information for you next month, and you'll go over the forecast, a lot of year-to-date figures, and you have that, just briefly. Oh, sorry. I put in the total revenue for the forecast and compared it to where we're at the end of March, and we're at ninety-four percent. And that sounds like, oh, we're going to get a lot more money than we thought, but we've already received the majority of our real estate money. So I think we're on target because we're very much on target for our state revenues and our other revenues. The expenditures were at seventy-seven percent, and if you look at, we're nine months through the year, it would be seventy-five percent. We're slightly over there on expenditures and hoping that that's due to a lot of things being paid upfront at the beginning of the year for supplies. So again, I'll have more information for you at the next board meeting, go over a lot more details with you for the forecast, early forecast. And this is just the '01 and '016 fund, the general fund and the emergency levy. That's the only thing that is in the five-year forecast. And it doesn't include food service, athletic funds, any of those expenditures. Do you have any questions on? Okay, number one, approve the March 31st, 2016 financial reports. Number two, recommend a resolution to establish a fund for the Centerway Archery grant from the High Department of Natural Resources with funds the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, funds to be determined.
I'll move in a second. Any more discussion of questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stark?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Stott?
Yes.
Mrs. Stott?
Yes.
I recommend a resolution to approve the payment of one hundred and sixty dollars to Maria Rengas as a staff zumba instructor. Payment will be made from one of our private funds.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stott?
Yes.
I have one other thing to talk about. I sent my email on Friday, I hope it went through, regarding the building project. Do you want me to talk about any of that?
Yeah.
A little bit. So I asked the attorney to summarize everything going on because we have a lot of liens, splash, lawsuits, for lack of a better word. The bricklayers have filed a lien regarding the project with Simonson. We have, they posted a bond, so what that means is the bond company has guaranteed the payment, and we have paid Simonson everything we owe them. So on behalf of the district, the attorney sent a letter to the court asking us to be dismissed from that court case. So we are, we are out of that now, we don't need to do anything. That should be done as far as Vermillion schools goes. Of course, Simonson is still working that other thing. The second item, which was the MJ Brown lien claim, that was with RFC. And there was an issue with a lien being filed, but also with the warranty on the roof with Versaco. If you remember that conversation, Versaco said, you know, if everything hadn't been paid, the warranty wasn't even there. And so the attorney, again, has worked on that for us on behalf, and we have a letter now from Versaco saying that our warranty is dead, that they've withdrawn the threat to suspend it. In addition, we just received a lien from Gunther Mechanical, and the attorney has reviewed that and has said that they did not file the claim timely. So unless there's something that can be remedied with that, they do not have a right to file Also, there has been thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents in legal fees due to all these issues with MJ Brown and RFC. So that was one of the things that the attorney recommended that we hold back, because we still owe RFC about forty thousand dollars, but we've not paid them because of the lien and because of the legal fees. And then the last item was regarding the Section 179D tax credit with the IRS. And Gunther Mechanical has been trying to get us to sign the paper book to give them this tax credit because of the building project. As a school district, we don't file taxes, so we can't get a tax credit. So generally, the architect gets that. So we were afraid to sign off on that, and then Lesko would come back and say, hey, we should have got the tax credit. And the attorney has been working with a line, which is Gunther's, I don't know if it's their attorney or whatever group that files these credits for them. And he has, the attorney reached out to Gunther and to Lesko, and it looks like if Gunther can provide the information that they did help with the design, they would be eligible to get it. So one of the things that the attorney did was, you know, there's a value to this, is there some type of service that you can give the school in exchange for this tax credit? So that's kind of where we are right now. Lesko does not want the tax credit. They've, they've never pursued those. So that would be something I would have to bring back to the board to approve that tax credit. So I assume we'll continue to see if there's something, a service they can offer with the HBAC systems. I know we have some issues that stay away, so. It's a whole lot of information. That's why I haven't put it into writing since his reading was bad. Even, you know, I talked it through on the phone, but I said I really need to assemble it for the board, so.
That's good, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item nine, discussion items, anything for discussion?
Yeah, I have a few things. First, I'd like to thank Candy Barsik, who is working for her last night tonight for photojournal. So congratulations on going to a new career. And I'd like to then also welcome Melanie Williamson, who's going to take her place and be the new next photojournal person, and hopefully have just as long a career as Candy did. How many years?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. That's a long time to cover the schools. Okay, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done for Vermillion.
Thank you.
Okay, one other discussion item. I've let the board know that we are going to be interviewing, and we did interview for the principal's position, and I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Lamb, who has accepted the principal's position at Huron. And he will be working, though, under contract until the end of July, so he still has some time to go with us, and he will continue doing everything that he needs to, to close the year down and to prepare the new principal. One thing that we are doing, and that was something that, as the forecast the night showed, and we've discussed when the students came up to talk to us about the cost savings or the cost reductions and the things that are necessary to do within the district, that will be one way that we will attempt, not attempt, we will save some money. We have Mrs. DeLees, who is working in the workforce development program and has been an administrator there in that program. We will not be hiring that position back, and we will be hiring then, from within, our administrative team, the high school principal. So we've interviewed tonight Mrs. DeLees, Mr. Tellier, and Mr. Zeller for the position. And so that position that Mrs. DeLees had will not be hired back. That's a substantial savings to the district for her salary that will help us to balance the budget and keep that away from students as much as possible. Will that have some impact on education? Yeah, but it's not like classes that are being reduced, that's just administrative costs that we think that the new administrators of the high school will have the ability to take care of and to oversee because we believe that Lisa's done a nice job of making that program as self-sufficient as she can, and we will be getting help from the teachers as well, and I think we'll be able to work collaboratively and absorb that position into the new administrative team that will be hired. And so we did interview tonight, and we had a teacher team and a, we also had a OC member, we had our custodial, head custodian, day head custodian as part of the team, Mr. Sexton, Jay LaCosco was there, Don Arini, Heidi Riddle, Mark Coonley was not able to make it from the special subject side, but he did send some questions, Mr. Bellata, and Mrs. Atkins from the parent side was there tonight to give us a parent perspective on interviewing. So we're working hard to present to the board who we believe is going to be the best candidate to fill this position. We believe we have three strong administrators that can fill the position. Are we happy that we're having to do this? No, because this is now another principal that we're hiring at the high school, and that affects the students, it affects the staff. But once again, we believe we have strong people to fill the role, and we believe that whoever we're going to choose will do a nice job of working as a team with the assistant. So we'll have a principal and an assistant to cover the entire building and cover the workforce as well. We believe that those administrators will be able to do the job, and of course, we'll still have the coverage that we continue to have, which is a principal and an assistant at the middle school. So we haven't made a final choice, but we're close, and we want to make this decision quickly so that the team, the staff here, both the teaching staff and the classified staff know who the principal is, the students will know who the new principal is as soon as possible, because I think that the more we communicate that out and the more that we, the quicker we can let people know how we're going to solve this issue, the better so that we can get some continuity. The good part about it is that I think that we will remain having continuity because they're inside people, they're inside candidates, we're not looking outside the district, and that will help. So it's a tough situation though still, because whenever you lose any administrator or teacher from a district, it has an impact. So this has impacted schools, and we're confident that we can do our best to minimize that as much as possible, so. I don't know if you have any questions about the process or anything, but I will be coming to you soon and letting you know what the recommendation is so that we can move forward with that.
Just a comment, I mean, I think it's worth saying, when I found out, I reached out to Mr. Lamb and had a conversation, a good conversation with him. Whenever you lose a leader, right, you want to know why, why, you know, is there a reason you wanted to leave Vermillion? And for him, that was not the case. I mean, he expressed that it was probably the hardest thing he's ever had to do, and his love for Vermillion and how proud he was of everything going on here. It was a family decision for him, he lives in Huron, and he just thought it was, you know, a great opportunity for him and his family. So, you know, congratulations to him, wish him the best. Like Phil said, it's not ideal, but I think we've got good, strong candidates who will be able to transition seamlessly.
And Mr. Lamb's been here seventeen years, and just like you said, Mr. Haberman, that's true, that it was not an easy decision for him, but what it allows him, a high school principal's job is very demanding, as far as the number of hours going, the number of events that they've got to attend. He'll be cutting down two and a half hours' worth of drive time, and that's not including evening events. And for him to get that family time back for him was the key piece. It wasn't that much of a financial decision for him, it was more of a family decision. So we respect that, and we also feel proud that someone else is interested in him and they recruited him, and so we've got to feel good that they're looking at our administrators and knowing that they're valuable resources to another community. So as much as we hate to see him go, we also are confident that we've got good people in place, and I think that the high school students and the high school staff are going to be happy with who we choose, and I think that, just like any other position, you're always looking for improvement too. So I believe that whoever we hire now is going to take this district to the next level. We're always looking to incrementally improve, and we have made changes since I've been here, there's no doubt about it. It started off with Mr. Collettrullio being replaced by Mrs. Riddle, who was replaced by Mr. Lamb. So with each one of those positions, changes, they were all doing a good job, it doesn't mean that each one of them didn't have their strengths, but we're also now looking to make incremental improvements, just like any other position within the district. You're looking to do a better job than the person that came here before you, no disrespect to the person that was doing the job. So that's just the situation that we're in, but I do believe it's a good one. So, that's just the situation that we're in, but I do believe it's a good one, too. And so, we're looking forward to coming to the board quickly here, telling you who we've got, and making that decision, or making that announcement out to the community here soon. And one last thing, just a quick comment. Last Friday night was a film festival that was produced by the students, and Oberlin and St. Ed's was here. And every year that this film festival goes on, it gets better. And it's all student-made films that are produced and done exclusively by the students with no outside help. And it just shows the sophistication level of the projects that are being done. So, I was able to attend that, and I did see Mr. Habermill and Mrs. Innes here, so thank you for attending that. I know that board members can't make, make it to every event, so try, and you can't be everywhere, so. I know that if you can't make this one, I'm sure you're going to try to make the next one. And so, it was just a great event, again, and a testament to the students and to the programming that we have and the technology that's available here, because the level of the projects are great. We've got even, I think we've got a couple. Mr. Dawson, beside yourself, anyone else in the audience tonight that made a film? Good job on that film. It was fun.
It was really cool. That's the first time I've been to it, and I hadn't been to it in previous years, and it was, like you said, really great work, and it was a really well-put-together event. The people, you know, whoever put it together worked on it. I don't know, Mr. Snyder probably was the key person, but it was a really, really good event.
Interestingly enough, when this first started, she was very much the head person that was involved on it, but the students this year did almost everything. They put, they put it together, they did the decorations, they did the planning, they had a committee that chose the top films, and I think that a couple of our students ended up being.
One of our students won first place.
Actually, the.
So, it was, yeah, it was good work.
Yeah, so. Need to see.
Yeah, it is. I mean, the town's amazing to see. These are students, it's great.
That's all I have for discussion items.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Item 10. The Consent Agenda. The Superintendent of the Treasurer recommends that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion, unless a member of the Board, Treasurer, or the Superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Number one, approve the minutes of the March 21st, 2016 regular board meeting and the April 6th, 2016 special board meeting. Number two, approve the following fundraisers per Policy 5830. The fall's baseball game to support the ALS scholarships, senior class concession sales for AAU tournament, VHS jeans for troops, and the sand volleyball tournament. Number three, approve removal of Simplex 6400 Time Control Center from district inventory. Number four, approve 2017 Vermillion High School band trip to Memphis and Nashville from April 18th to April 22nd, 2017. Number five, approve OSBA service agreement for financial consulting for the period of March 21st, 2016 through August 20th, 2016. Number six, approve the county, 2016, 2017 county service agreement with Educational Service Center of Lorraine County. Number seven, approve 2016-17 multi-agreement contract with North Point Educational Service Center. Number eight, approve the service provider contract for internet service with North Coast Council for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019. Number nine, approve the 2016-17 school nursing contracts for RN and LPN services with the Erie County General Health District. Number 10, approve the following employment action. Resignation of Caitlin Market, SMS teacher, effective June 6th, 2016. One-year limited classified contract for the 2016 contract year to Danielle Van Duzen, effective April 25th, 2016, Level 1, 997 per hour. One-year limited student-worker contract to Dylan Skinner, effective April 18th, 2016. One-year limited additional duties contract for the 2015-16 contract year to the following, and Brett Dawson, major musical orchestra director, Level 10 Step 0, $1,797. One-year limited additional duties contract for the 2016-17 contract year to the following, pending completion of background check and documentation of pupil activity permit as listed. One-year limited supplemental contract for 2016-17 contract year to the following, pending completion of background check and documentation of pupil activity permits, also as listed. And these are most of our fall activities. One-year limited contract, one-year limited classified substitute contract on an as-needed basis for the 15-16 year to Craig Snyder, effective April 18th, pending background check. Teacher continuing contract, beginning with the 2016-17 contract year for Jacob Baker, Kelly Karason, Kenneth Ryan, Megan Costanzo, Jennifer Looks, Kevin Hogan, and Laura McDaniel. Limited certified contracts, beginning with the 16-17 year, as listed on the sheet. I'll move.
I'll second.
Any items that anyone would like removed from the consent?
Nope.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Okay, item 11, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Item 12 is date and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings are held at Vermillion High School, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless otherwise noted. We have May 9th, June 13th, July 11th, and August 8th, and I think we're going to add a special work session for May 23rd.
At 7:00.
Yes. That's a Monday, I take it?
Yes.
Okay. And then lastly, lastly, item 13, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of employment or compensation of public employees and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
And Mr. Stern?
Yes.
8:17 PM.